Everyone, and I want to thank you for coming to the the public first, the public hearing on the 2122 budget, and then we will move into our regular meeting at seven. So let's do the pledge of allegiance and approval of agenda and all that first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's do the approval of the agenda, please. I'm entertaining a motion.
Move to approve the agenda.
I'll move that we accept the agenda.
Okay, motion by Jess, seconded by Jeannie to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So all yes, thank you. Communications, do you want to wait till the regular meeting, Mr. Ellis? Okay, we'll come back to communications. So we're going on to the public hearing, and I'm going to turn that over to Craig.
Thank you. So we met last Thursday and had a study session regarding 2021, 2022 school district budget. And it also included a three-year forecast following that year. So I just want to briefly have a small, short presentation. Most of these slides were included in the study session on Thursday. So just a few introductory remarks, dealing with the general fund, which of course is the biggest fund in the district. There are four other funds that I will discuss as part of this presentation. Just a reminder that the projection includes a decrease of 70 full-time equivalent students. That is roughly $600,000. And as the time is getting closer and closer to the start of school, some of the buildings are showing an increase in enrollment, which is great news. Again, this is a conservative enrollment, don't want it to be too low, but don't want it to be too high. So this budget includes a reduction of 70 students in the general fund. And those enrollment is what drives the basic education funding formulas, which I talked about last Thursday. So in a nutshell, this budget does show our expenses in the general fund exceeding our revenues, and that's on the first page, page one of, one of 12. This will just be a general overview. There are going to be a couple of slides for each, for each fund, but as you can see, the the expenses are exceeding the revenues by 1.6 million. Estimated beginning fund balance is 4.2 million. Again, we won't really know that actual number until probably the end of October, after all the year and adjustments and grants and everything are closed out. So I'm fairly conservative in that number. I think that is with grants and all those things that that number hopefully will be a little bit higher, but we have to pick a starting point, and that's what I'm saying. It'll be estimated at 4.2. And also, I know Peggy, you've said this many times, a budget is, is an estimation, it's a projection. The future three years, the state has actually called it a forecast. So that's what this is. If everything happened down to the dollar, then our fund balance would decrease by the 1.6 million. We've typically not had that big of a decrease. Again, I do my best estimation of utilities and staffing and, and all the non-employee related type expenses. And every month I will present to the board an actual compared to the budget. So we will, you know, seriously watch this every month as we typically have over the years. Then the second page is the actual enrollment for the 2122 current school year. And then the forecast for the next three years. And as you can see, the enrollment is continuing to decline. The forecast, we could approach this a couple of different ways. The way that I have normally done this is here's basically the worst case scenario if we don't make any changes. So no, no reduction in staffing, no reduction in programs. The expenses are basically going to stay the same with a little inflation added to it. That's, that's the forecast of enrollment. And then page three is just a comparative history of the general fund from the 2016, 17 school year actual in and up through the 2021 budget. The only change on the budget is that that the beginning fund balance is an actual number. So that the 3.5 million is where we're going to, where we actually ended up, starting this school year of 2021. And the the fund balance estimation for 2021 was a decrease of 1.3 million. Well, we're actually going to show a surplus. So, you know, bad budgeting on my part, but Esser came to the rescue and our expenses, as you know, board has, have been dramatically decreased during the 2021 school year, which has resulted in actual surplus for the year. That is not projected to be the case for the 2122 year, which is the next page, page four of 12. In here again, just a reminder that this is assuming no changes. You know, our fund balance will continue to decline because mostly related to the declining enrollment. And so certainly, the school district cannot operate with a deficit total overall fund balance. So like I say, this is the worst case scenario. I mean, it's not, it wouldn't be allowed, but I just wanted to let the board to see that currently, if we continue with, with these deficit spending, we'll have to make some reductions, and we'll talk about that in a, in a, in a few minutes. But that's just the nutshell of, of the general fund. I do want to point out one thing in the 2223 school year, if you look at under the expenditures, the federal stimulus line, the 1.8 million for the 2122 school year, and then the 5.2 million for 2223. Those are the Esser dollars, and I apologize, Jeannie, I don't remember what the, what that stands for. Esser, but it's, but it's the federal cares dollar, and cares is another acronym, but, but Esser two is the 1.8 million and Esser three, again, projected to be spent in the 2223 is the 5.2 million. There's rumors of an Esser four. But as of right now, that, that hasn't happened. And there again, we, we can certainly, if we have the need, move the Esser three dollars into 2122. I mean, those are very flexible dollars. I believe that the Esser three dollars need to be spent, I believe, by 2024. But we have them in our, in our budget for the, our forecast for the 2223 school year.
Greg, is that December of 24 or because we have the 2324 school year, then we have the 2425?
So that, that is the end of August of 2024. Yeah, August of 24. And I can, I can verify that. I remember when, when we had Mr. Logston was here, we had that, and I, I should have known that, but okay, I know that it was extended another year than normal, so I think it's the 20, August of 24. But that, that's the end of the general fund. If you want to just see if there's any questions for the board at the end, or just go on as you want to, I can finish, and then we can have questions.
What's the board's?
If you prefer that. Okay, capital project is the next one, which is our construction projects. And I do want to point out, so I'm on page five now, that the 2122 budget, the board had authorized down under the expenditure side, under the 20, excuse me, 2021 year, you'll see the total of 31,695 as the total expenditures. That is what the board has authorized for 2021. We had planned on needing a budget extension as I have, as I said Thursday night, as I've reviewed with our project manager and looked at projected expenses for the month of August. Now again, these are bills received in August that will be paid in September that we should be under just barely. The appropriation was 31,701. So it's razor thin, but the estimation is that we will not need that budget extension meeting for the capital project fund. So, and we will put that on our website that the meeting has been canceled, but, but we, you know, we're razor thin on that. But I'm anticipating that we will, we will be able to not exceed that budget appropriation for the 2021. And then for the remaining years, you can see on the next page, page five, that again, the current budget for 2122. And then the forecast, again, the, the high school project is almost completed. Then the, the remodels for King River View and Heights are next in line. And then I believe this coming summer, you know, a year from now, basically, is when we will go out to bid for the Witstrand project, and then the Witstrand project will be, will be done. And so then, again, forecasted that this again does not have the construction of a bus garage or, or any, any major improvements. You know, once we get more down the road, we can certainly include those in our budgets and our forecasts, but for now, I have not included those, you know, whether the funding and in the expenditures, but the forecast is, would basically finish off these, these capital projects, you know, the, the elementary schools. That's the capital projects. The next one on page seven is the comparative for the debt service fund. And debt service fund pays for the, not only the devoted bond on, for the construction project, but there are some non-voted, LGO stands for limited general obligation bonds that the board has approved to buy some vehicles and some buses. And there's certain transfers from the transportation vehicle fund to make the payments. That's basically the revenue source for the, for the debt service fund. So you can see those, those payments in there, and basically the, when the terms are out, so the bus acquisitions done in, you know, like 2016 or, you know, are running out basically, right? If you look at, at page eight, those acquisitions are pretty much done in 2122, and then you can see that some of those payments will no longer be needed as we go on through the next three years after that. The ASP fund, Associated Student Body, again, is majority of this is, is the high school, and they have, you know, student treasurers, and they, they do the budgeting and, and review and approve the payments. So this is pretty much the, the students in there. Of course, the elementaries, we do have small, you know, 21,000, $36,000 fund balances in those, in those ASPs, but most of that is like fundraisers, right? Like the Seattle trip and those kind of things. Again, who knows what's going to happen, right, with, with the virus and that. Obviously, we didn't have those fundraisers and went to Seattle or the camp or anything like that last year, but, but those are expenditures that cultural, athletic, recreational, or social are the type of expenditures that, that the ASP can be spent on. Then there's the, the history or the comparative since 1617. And then the projection, projected numbers. Again, that was, I just put like a 1% or some, you know, some little factor for inflation. Just to, to see the, you know, the fund balance would increase a little bit each year, assuming everything's status quo. So that's just why you see a slight increase in the ending fund balance for each of those years. The last fund is the transportation vehicle fund, which pays for school buses. That's the only thing they can pay for, and some major improvements to, you know, like a motor or something like that to a school bus. The state does give depreciation on, I think, over, I believe, an 18-year period for, for buses. And so you can see for the 2122, state depreciation estimated at 201,000. We are estimating, or not estimating, we are wanting to purchase one bus for 175,000. Amy did want to have a brief discussion with the board about seat belts. Seat belts are about $14,000. And this bus that she would like to purchase is a trip bus, replacing one of the older trip buses that currently do not have seat belts, and seat belts are about $14,000. And here's, here's the issue. If the board approves this, these budgets tonight, then we would like to order this bus by Tuesday. We can, we can get the 21, we can get the 2021 pricing if we order that bus in Aug, by August 31. But the issue is for cash flow, we can't pay for that bus, and we won't re receive that bus until a year from now. So we don't have enough cash flow to make $175,000 payment unless, until we receive the state depreciation, which we receive on August 31st of every year. So if that makes sense, the 217,990 under the 2021 state depreciation, we will receive that on Tuesday, next Tuesday, the 31st. But the 201,000 estimate wouldn't be received until August 31st of 22. So not sure if you want to have a discussion about the seat belts, not, not, Amy's recommendation is not to get the seat belts. If that's okay with the board, then we can do that, or, yeah. She says the trip bus did not have seat belts on them right now.
I thought we had trip buses that work with, with seat belts right now.
No, unless I have misunderstood what she has said to me.
That was you understood, Andy?
Yeah.
We, we have purchased trip buses that are designed for extra cargo underneath, et cetera. But those, because they were trip buses, did have seat belts. I guess I'd like an answer, you know, find out what's going on with that.
How about if I text Amy and I can, maybe when it's part of my report, she can respond back. If she, if maybe she's hearing right now, she can text me and say, yes.
Amy.
Yeah.
Come on, Amy, you told me they didn't have seat belts.
So the first question actually I would have had was before you started talking about seat belts, is what you're wanting to do to order them Tuesday, pay for them out of some other fund, and then put this money back?
They would be paid a year from now.
Oh, we just have to have the order by Tuesday?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we just ordered the bus, and then we have a whole year until it's delivered and, and paid for. Yeah, but it would save us about 10% in, as far as cost.
That saves more than that. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's the transportation vehicle fund, and then again, forecasted, we, I have in here to purchase a bus each year. You can see that the bonds will be done in the 2223 school year. At least for right now, that's what we're planning. You know, we're beginning to look at when the buses are taken off the depreciation schedule. We still have, Peggy, as you know, debt that the state will continue. Again, according to our current arrangements with the federal government to pay us payment in lieu of taxes. So we still have debt that we would not lose out on, on any of those dollars. There's still some question whether those dollars are going to keep coming, but we haven't seen anything. The timing has been suspect in the past few years, but we have still received our payment in lieu of taxes. If we have debt, then we qualify for that.
And it's almost like, correct me if I'm wrong, but it, what we anticipate getting from Pilt dollars is almost equivalent to what our expenses are for the motor fleet.
Yes, we, and we do have, so not to confuse everybody, but we do have this Pilt money that's held by Benton County on our behalf. So it's not in our, in our financial statements, and we, you can see here. If you wanted to go back to the debt service fund real quickly.
The page.
Let me get here. If you want to go back to like page seven or eight, you can look at page seven. You can see the transfer in under, under revenue, Pilt transfer in, so 15,000 in 1920, and then the payment on those vehicles is 61,800. So we'll keep paying those, and then you can see that, that those payments in the 2425 year, the final payments dropped to 61,450. If I did another year, it would be zero. So at the end of the 2425 school year, the vehicles have been paid for. But we're using that Pilt money to, to transfer into this fund. There's probably 300,000 maybe in there right now. It might be 350, I can't remember, it's, but it's somewhere in that range.
Have you heard anything about the Pilt money going away in the future?
Well, I just know that a number of years, you know, probably two, three years ago, there was conversation about the federal government wanting to change the formula, which would lower the portion that Benton and Franklin Counties would get, but we haven't had conversations for a number of years, but, so it's still continuing. There is some pressure to lower that, but I have not heard any.
I had heard some discussion not too long ago about it going away in the next couple of years.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything official about that officially. So though, that's the presentation that I have on, on the budget and the forecast for the next current year, if you want to call that 2122, and then for three-year forecast for, for the through August of 2025.
Okay, is this the time where we ask about public comment on that?
Yes, and may, maybe, Peggy, if it's okay, I, we did receive, we did receive one question through the email to discuss how, how would the school district alleviate the forecast budget shortfall of the 1.6 million, and then, of course, in the 2425 a year, that would be the $3.2 million shortfall. And I guess I can maybe start the conversation with Matt with that, and then Matt, you can certainly jump in. Again, this, this is an estimate. Hopefully enrollment will come in, which will help if it does. But this is a budget, and I know that, that over the years, our budgets at sometimes have reflected bigger deficits than have actually happened. Doesn't mean that, that I'm over putting money in the budget. It just means that some of those expenses have not transpired. We have certainly, over the years, looked at, you know, reducing our staffing, and we have not, since I've been here for 14 years, have, have never had a reduction in force, at least at the certificated level. And so we watch those numbers very carefully, and you know, hopefully there will be some savings with utilities, with the efficiency of these new buildings. There's a lot of different things that we watch. Worst case scenario, we, we have typically, if staff have left, we have tried to maybe, first of all, not fill those positions so that there would not be the necessity for reduction of force. Certainly, we, we can't continue. A $1.6 million deficit is not sustainable. You know, we would, we'd only have 600,000 at the end of two years, and then we would have to do something dramatic in the following year, but so Matt, any, any comments that you'd like to make?
Yeah, I would just say that when we look at budget forecasts, there are a number of different variables. Of course, enrollment would be one of the most important. Also, the idea of the number of staff that you employ and veteran staff members. And the past process has been very good at keeping veteran staff members. It was a community that people have wanted to live in. And so those staff members are nearing, nearing kind of the end of the road. We don't know when they're, they'll choose to retire. But that's a variable of who we have working and who will choose to retire or in their time with Prosser School District. In addition to that, one of the other variables is grant money as well as levy monies that we can take in. Pilt was a variable that we had talked about, that we can shuffle some funds around. Of course, we also had that one-time boost of Esser funds, which were emergency relief funds out of the CARES Act due to COVID. And so when we project it, it's just that, it's a projection that we can't necessarily come up with accurate numbers for long-run enrollment, or who will be around in the next five. In addition to that, we've also cut costs with efficiency and buildings. So the, of course, the windows are newer, the heating, the HVACs newer, the light bulb, or, and so we use less on utilities there. When we look at the scale of the building, that, that's important. We've also spent money on a device per kid, and so each student has a laptop. So copying, copying costs and paper contracts won't be as big of an issue in the future as what we relied upon in the past. So those are all things that we're looking at and are considerations. Like I said, Craig has had, what'd we say, 14, 14 years in the district. His budgets have always come back great. Prosser School District has been in great financial standing for the, at least the past 14 years, if not longer than that. Under Dr. Tolcher, and of course, Craig was one, the one running the budget there. So and on top of that, his audits have been just phenomenal. He just recently came back with another clean audit, and so I don't think that there's a real reason to worry. I think any of this is really trying to prey upon fears of that. We did have a robust budget because of Esser. And so part of the strategy is, you had talked about, is to spend some of that down, not to keep it in the coffers where it can't be used, to use it on kids and use it on teachers. So I do feel like that's a good strategy to consider.
As I said, just when I made one last comment, and then we can see if there's other questions, but we will watch this very carefully. The, we don't know all the teacher experience and those kind of things. We have a number of new staff this year, so we projected where we think that they would end up on the salary schedule, but that's, we don't know until probably October, when that actually happens. So we will true up the budget, and, you know, if, if we're down, then, then we will certainly start to react. So.
And as Craig had mentioned, we haven't had to have serious conversations about RIF. In fact, over the past years, we've given employees raises, and our labor unions raises that reflect not only the, the implicit price to play their cola, but sometimes even more on top of that. So, yeah, we've done, we've done a good job being good financial stewards, and I thank the board for that as well.
Well, does the board have any questions for, for Craig? Okay, it is seven o'clock.
Well, if there are other questions.
If you wanted those now, if you wanted them during your, okay, Sean, I need you to help me, but if there's anyone in the audience here or in the Zoom audience that would like to comment, we do limit comments to two minutes. And if, if you are in the Zoom audience and would like to address the board, just unmike, I mean, unmute your mic, and Sean will let us know who's out there. Okay, it looks like everybody. Okay, it looks like everybody is still um, where they were at. So we're going to go ahead and move into the regular meeting.
And maybe just formalities, close the public hearing if you would. Just close the public hearing if you would, please.
Yes, I, yeah. Oh, yes, ma'am. Go ahead. Could you state your name and last name?
So I'll ask, I'll answer your last question first. That is a
Could you move up to the mic and?
I I can try to repeat those, but I'm just gonna in my order, if that's okay, you correct me if I'm wrong. So first que- the last question was, are we replacing the the bus that we're buying? Are we replacing or is that going to be in addition to? Um, according to Amy, that's going to be a replacement. So that'll be a replacement of an old trip bus. I don't know if she's.
Okay.
She hasn't responded to me, so I I'll try and get the answer on whether then uh, as far as Witstrand, you asked how many uh, students were out at Witstrand, right? Somewhere. Well, there's about forty times six, right? So about two forty, two fifty. There's there's ba- there's basically two classrooms and about twenty to twenty two uh, students per classroom. For for six grades, K through five. Yeah. And then then the other uh, question was basically, I'm I'm I was gonna say it how I understood it is how are you basing, what are you basing your enrollment decline on? And um at Thursday night, I showed I had a slide that showed the enrollment from two thousand nine at the end of the two thousand nine, two thousand ten school year, all the way to two thousand twenty, twenty one school year. And it had dropped from twenty eight hundred fifty four at the two thousand nine, ten school year. And to the year we just concluded is twenty four hundred thirty three, so four hundred students less over that timeframe. And again, there's not an exact science to this. I look at the grades uh, enrollment and then I roll them forward. You know, if their kindergarten is last year, they should be first graders this year and so forth. Uh, and then I see what history has done with that over the last five years. And of course, last year was an anomaly with COVID and uh, so I've I've tried to be conservative, but not overly conservative. Uh, but that's kind of how I have looked. So for example, last year, our estimate, uh, we had, I think, seven more than what I had projected. So that's pretty dang good. I mean, doesn't get real closer than that, but uh, just just looking at the history and then the kindergartners are always a challenge. I try to look at if there's housing developments are going in and how many students per per home and those kind of things and uh, and try and estimate estimate it that way too. Does that answered your question?
Yeah, there's no real exact science to it, but you can look at everything from the number of kids that we've had in cohorts to birth rates to, like you said, residential builds and things like that within the area. Um, typically, we've had a standard number of students who choice out. Uh, maybe they choose to attend elementary school in Patterson. Um, and we also have students who choice in every year. And so that's a little bit trickier that if if I live in Grandview Boundaries and I want to be a Mustang and, you know, be a part of that that tradition, then of course they have to submit a paper to us to choice into our district and we have to accept them as students. And so that's kind of where it gets tricky. It's been um, I want to say stagnant and or declining just because um, we don't have large neighborhoods that are going in um, in Prosser. Prosser stayed relatively about the same size. And so that's one of those things that when, you know, uh, we don't have a lot of newer families coming in with a a lot of big homes that I I would say the last kind of substantial family housing unit that went in was the um, the apartments. Um, so that um, just like, yeah, so that's kind of one of those things that we consider too, because we have to meet those demands of the students with teachers. And so it's it's a little bit of a guessing game. Um, but Craig's pretty dialed in on looking at the history and and looking at different factors. No, the district, the district actually has a right to the FTE within their district and so we don't have to let kids go to Patterson if we don't want to. And we do that because the parents choose, you know, they they want that as a choice. And so we validate that. Other districts don't have to allow kids, students to come into our district as well. There's state law around. They can have, uh, they kind of um, are they have the FTE um, are responsible for the FTE within that district. And so they don't have to let them choice in. We opened up our borders when I got here for that purpose because we were kind of stagnant and or declining. But we recognize that if there was a student in Grandview and perhaps they were a student that we thought would be a good fit for Prosser and to accept them. We have a lot of families that live kind of on the border of Grandview or Mapton that would like their students to to be a part of Prosser School District. And sometimes it's so close that like, well, you're actually a Mapton School District. Um, so yeah, it's a, we we usually um, there's some follow up there with the child's principal, um, principal to principal calls about, you know, who's this kid? Why do they want to come to Prosser? Um, some conversation with the family.
Okay, um, I'm gonna go ahead and take my mask out. I'm gonna go ahead. Oh, okay, Adriana.
Yeah.
Is this regarding the budget, Adriana?
It is, yes.
Is this regarding the budget?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna give you two minutes.
Okay, just two minutes is fine. So I'm wondering um, with the new uh, housing developments going in. Um, how much money will each child bring to the district?
Yeah, the the full time equivalent student brings in almost nine thousand dollars. That's that's of basic education dollars.
But that's an average and not all kids are created the same. So elementary is worth a little bit more. Special ed bilingual migrant draw different funds as well. And so when he says that, that's on kind of average. They're they're different. Um, you know, we serve different kids. And then, of course, with that, the money always follows the kid. And so that was another thing about enrollment. If we have a lot of kids enroll in uh, CBC, that money follows them and goes into Columbia Basin College and is a part of Prosser School District.
Okay, that help Adriana?
Yes, uh, real, real quick, um, I can't tell who answered that question. Was that Mr. Ellis?
Uh, the the last part of it was answered by Mr. Ellis when he talked about CBC. But the first part was addressed by by Mr. Reynolds.
So let's say that a student goes to CBC for part time, but also attends the high school for like shop or um, some other classes. Would the school district get money? Half of the money or would all of the money follow the student to CBC?
I can answer that. So the the definition of a full time equivalent student, that's why it has to be a a full time equivalent. So we have many students, as you have pointed out, that uh, have partial schedules. So we would, so say that a student only attends the high school half of the day, then we would get half of a full time equivalent for that student.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so we have the head count would be one, but the full time equivalent in that situation would be a half.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you for answering the questions.
Thank you. All right, we are moving, uh, we're closing the the public hearing for the twenty one, twenty two budget. And we are moving into our regular board meeting. So thank you for all being here. Uh, we're going to go back to communications. Mr. Ellis, did you want to address that?
Yeah, and so what up on my laptop here? We had, we had some communications around people who would like to um, address the board at tonight's meeting. But there was another communication from the Benton County Commissioners. It was addressed to um, Mr. Scotty Hunt. Um, and they I think that they still believe that he was the president, but the commissioners were just saying, we uh, we want to support the leadership of Prosser School District to make local decisions. Um, so that was a communication that I wanted to share with the school board. On top of that, I um, I provide you with a letter from superintendent Chris Reichtall that came out right before the meeting um, dated August twenty fifth, basically telling um, the district, I'll read the first sentence here. Uh, at the end of July, formed you the OSPI intended to withhold funds from school districts who willfully fail to comply with the health and safety mess uh, measure required by Governor Inslee. Um, so today we filed an emergency rule that defines OSPI's process um, for districts who willfully fail to comply with the requirements. So basically, Chris Reichtall saying that if we fail to comply with the governor's executive orders, then uh, they will withhold funds from Prosser School District. Um, and those are the only communications that I have.
And correctly, but those are considered laws.
Yeah, yeah, it is. So everything that the governor kind of spoke into existence is an executive order and it's considered law.
Okay. And the last part of that, I'm just wanted to add that last part. The rule applies to both the mask mandate as well as the vaccination mandate for school employees. And it goes into effect immediately. Is this available?
Okay, we can post that, but it's still they they came out and set kind of set some things, some foundational things. Um, and then they've been releasing information about how it will work. So um, we have communicated once to our staff member. Staff member saying this is kind of what that schedule looks like. If you choose, we know that they said that there will be exemptions for employees who don't want to get the vaccination. Um, and so we're still working through what those exemptions look like at our level um, in order to to operate um, in the way that the way that they've outlined.
Thank you. Wow, I'm moving on now to the uh, formal hearing of visitors and uh, before we open that, I do want to remind you that we have, we limit that to uh, twenty minutes as as part of the board meeting. Each person that would like to address the board will have just two minutes. And we will have to to ask you to stop at the end of your time because if there's other people that would like to address the board. But I want to say your views and interests in education are important. We really do appreciate people that come forward, whether their visit is for the purpose of bringing information to the board um, or solving a problem or simply want to see what's going on in the school district. Uh, the guidelines for addressing the board first is that we do ask that any comm- public comments happen during this time period instead of throughout the rest of the meeting. Uh, prior to the start of the meeting, if at all possible, we do ask that you try to sign in um, virtually, you can email Mr. Ellis. We did have have a person that did do that email sign in, but with the the way things are at, you also can notify us by Zoom that you would like to address the board. Um, you need to uh, state your full name when you address the board and we do ask that you spell your last name so that we get it correct in our records. And uh, we ask that you do not reflect adversely on the political or economic views, ethnic background, character or motives of any individual. And do keep your comments concise, not emotional and brief. So Mr. Ellis is is going to be the timekeeper or, okay. Craig, you'll do it. Okay, okay. So Craig is going to be the timekeeper and he will uh, give a heads up when you're close to your two minutes, so you can wrap it up. Uh, the first person that uh, we did receive an email from was Miguel Orr.
Yeah.
And Miguel, if you're in the audience, I would, this would be your time um, to address the school board.
Okay, I assume since you have my name, I don't need to repeat that. Okay.
Yeah, could you, could you repeat your name and spell the last name, please?
Miguel, last name Orr, O R R.
Thank you.
Are you good?
Yep.
Okay, great. Members of the Prosser School Board, I'm here today to speak about guards and guns are in our school campuses and the urgency of the mental health crisis. I clearly state that there is no evidence that the presence of armed guards, police officers or more weapons increases school safety. However, I want to put the crisis of school shootings in perspective. In the two thousand seventeen to eighteen school year, thirty five youth ages five to eighteen died by homicide on school campuses in the USA, while three thousand and thirteen youth ages five to nineteen died by suicide in the United States. This is a difference of more than eighty five times. The crisis of youth suicide far outweighs the threat of active shooter events. Furthermore, it's the CDC reports that over a third of high school students in the US reported persistent feelings of sadness and hopelessness in twenty nineteen and approximately a sixth of youth reported making a suicide plan in the past year. Prosser itself has been devastated by several youth suicides, which have shaken the community. The crisis of mental health far outweighs the threat of school shootings, which is inflated by mass media. As a high school student, I witnessed these issues firsthand. Many of my friends suffered from mental illness and could have benefited from increased mental health resources as it stands in the high school. According to what I was able to gather from the school website, Prosser High School currently hires a social worker, a counselor who also services all of the schools in the district and a nurse. Please correct me if I am wrong. These staff are incredibly valuable to the students they serve, yet they need more help to deal with the issues students face. To meet the professional standard recommended minimum ratios of students to mental health professionals, Prosser High School needs to hire four counselors, three social workers, a nurse and a psychologist. Families often don't have the resources to pay for mental health services for their children, so their needs are left unmet. More families don't trust their children's own decisions and knowledge about their health and refuse to help them access the services they need. I know this from personal experience as a mental health advocate and someone who desperately wanted to help my friends who were struggling. What am I supposed to tell someone in need who has nowhere to go because their family, society and school has failed them? I urge you not to increase the presence of weapons on school and to fund more mental health resources for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Miguel. All right, um, she uh, Sean, I'm gonna have you help me with the, or is there anybody in the regular audience that would like to address the board? Sir, would you come up to the microphone? Okay.
Now we're good to go?
Yeah, thanks.
Uh, John Rippling, I live in Prosser, Washington. And uh, you, I I I think I'm here for uh, for something that I have no control over whatsoever. You've already swallowed the governor's laws. I mean, it's all good, right? You're gonna mask up the kids and mask up society, go back to masking for COVID and continue with the vaccines or whatever. Ech, that's terrible. It's too bad. A personal opinion. Okay, so the other two things, okay. That's gonna be a ground rules thing. I'm pretty sure we're gonna, we're gonna have to make a movement. People are gonna, or else we're gonna have this going on for the rest of our lives. And we already see what's going on with October, October twenty third or the eighteen. Yeah, it's a pretty bad day for a lot of people. Not cool. Um, all right, so hey, that aside, I don't want to hurt anybody's feelings. Uh, this thing about CRT. Is that gonna be taught? You know, because we do have this governor that's pushing that. I believe it's on agenda. Okay, is that going to be pushed uh, down the, that not not here is it? We're not gonna do that, are we?
I would just say that we have local control over curriculum and that any curriculum choices go through Deanna's office. Um, there I I'm not aware of any specific CRT curriculum out there. And so.
So they're not teaching it in the schools.
I don't know anybody who's teaching it in the schools. I don't know anybody who's teaching it in the schools.
Just providing the teachers with information that could be useful, but no, there, there's no expectation. No, there's no expectation that it's going to be offered in the schools.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, Sean.
We're in a tricky position, but this is a copy of the letter that, that is written. And so these are, a lot of these people are elected, state elected officials too, that people voted on for like Chris Reichtall, Janzley as well. And so I know that there's disagreement, but so that you have access.
Thanks for your answer.
Yeah.
All right, Shannon. Thank you, Mr. Riplinger. No, but you can pull that up online is what he's saying.
What I was saying to, what I was saying to Mr. Riplinger is if he goes online and looks up the current board agenda, it'll have the outline of the course modules. That is the course that we're currently having the teachers look at. And it's got just sort of an overview of, of some of it. And some of the questions and some of the things we're having them look at. That'll give you a lot of the answers you want.
And if you would like, you can have my copy of the modules, that information. Okay. Thank you very much. Sean, if you will help me, are there any board, or excuse me, are there any Zoom members that would like to address the board? And remember, questions need to be concise, two minutes. Do we have anybody? Okay, then we're going to go ahead and move along. We are on to information items. And the first information item is the conditional certification notification for the 2021.
Twenty one, twenty one, twenty two. I should be in trouble for missing this one. But Mr. Munoz at the middle school, he finished his program. He couldn't really take, he couldn't take his test last year because of they stopped testing, but he just took his test. He just doesn't have the results yet. He has a conditional certificate that makes him fully qualified, but we're just, it's just informational. He'll have his regular certificate after we get his test results back.
Okay, thank you. Onto discussion items. Are, first of all, are there any questions for Deanna on that information? Okay, then moving on to discussion items. It's the adoption of policy number 2195 academic acceleration. And this is first reading. That means we won't take any formal approval of this policy tonight, but it's first reading for the board. So Deanna, go ahead.
So this is a new policy that's required. And actually, the policy itself is kind of how we already operate. I think they've just kind of formalized that. So you don't have students that are, you know, excelling in assessment, but yet being held back in their coursework for some other, maybe some other reason. And so this is a automatic, you automatically move kids into a higher, a higher course if they have higher test scores. So it's required. And like I said, everything that's in this sample procedure, we already really do, but the policy is required, so.
Okay, so this is just for our information tonight. We will put it on the agenda next meeting. But does the board have any questions tonight on this?
Do we have to prove it as a first reading?
Well, it's only in discussions, wasn't in first reading. Yes, yes. And it's, I mean, we just have to have it on the books by this school year, so we're fine. There's no, there's not a rush.
Okay, thank you. So Deanna, can I see you down there? Did you have any questions? Okay, then. One of the tables a little more like this, in what we see each other. Um, next we'll move on to reports. And the first is Deanna on the Assistant Superintendent's Report for Curriculum Instruction.
So I have a few things that, just comments about things that we did start. We had our first mandatory days back this year, this week for teachers. We had training on Monday for the elementary teachers and Tuesday for the secondary teachers on trauma, trauma-informed practices. It was, I sat through almost all of both days, but very informative on and really helps you think about when kids react a certain way, or maybe are misbehaving, or maybe say certain things. It's not necessarily because they just want to be naughty and they don't care. It's because there's something else going on. And so it's really about helping teachers recognize those patterns or that behavior in a student to look at it from a different perspective, not just, oh, we're going to discipline you because you didn't behave. One of the comments, Jessica Wallace was the trainer. She's actually Jessica Anderson Wallace. She's Mark and Cindy Little's daughter. She said that when a student says, this really stuck with me, when a student says, I don't care. So say you've said, you know what, I'm going to take your phone away. I don't care. You're not going to get to watch TV. I don't care. You're going to be grounded for a week. I don't care. I don't care really means I don't feel cared about. Don't think anyone's caring about me. And so it's, 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 and she talked a lot about giving kids choices and about, you know, not painting yourself into corners. Sometimes you give kids ultimatums and it doesn't work out well for you. But it, she has a second round of training that gives the teachers the classroom strategies. This is really about learning what, the, what, what happens in the brain. She actually showed a scan of a, a PET scan of two brains, a child who was neglected, abused, and a child who was not. And the brains look completely different. There's black spaces in the brain of the child who was neglected. So it was really, she, really interesting. She talked about a study in, that was done on, in Romania, on Romanian orphans. There's a lot of trauma with Romanian orphans, a lot of, you know, that reactive attachment disorder, all sorts of things that go on with the kids. And they had, she had studied these, these kids for years and years. And there was this particular group of kids that year after year were doing well. And one of the things with Romanian orphanages, at least in the past, was kids get put in cribs and they're really not interacted with, they're not held. And they, they went back and they, they found the reason that these kids were doing well was when the janitor got off work, he went and held every single baby every night. And those babies were, those babies were having successful lives and versus the, the, most of the other kids were not. So just really interesting about what, what, you know, what happens when kids feel loved and when they feel cared about and, and how things can change for a student who might not be feeling that. So I actually talked with Haley tonight about possibly offering the strategy session on the State In-service Day in October. So there's more to come on that because teachers were really asking for that. We had some folks that came up and said, oh, my gosh, you've taught me so much as a parent, how to interact with my kids. So it was really good. We had, building mandatory days started today with building meetings, some professional development on some behavior type behavior game, the tax behavior game that Witstrand's been doing for a couple of years. The other two elementaries are going to be doing the same thing. So they'll be doing that in common. And then the last thing I did put, the outline of the course, which you had seen before, but I put a copy of the goals of every module in so that you can see it. Peggy called me today and she wants to take the course. What I'm going to have to tell you is the course ends day after tomorrow. So there's a new course. It's the same, that meets the same standards, but has a different name. So that's the one we'll sign up for. And any other, and, and Jesslyn already took that first one. And any other board members, welcome to take that as well. It is virtual. It is in Canvas. There are videos and, and reading and podcasts and different things that are part of it. So that's, that's all for me.
Any questions for Deanna? Okay, moving then to the Assistant Superintendent's Report for Business and Operations.
I did want to report back. I heard back from the Transportation Department. We only have two buses that have seatbelts and the trip bus is not. So I guess the re, the proposal, the request was not to have this replacement bus with seatbelts. This has discussion item or a question. Now, the budget, of course, includes that, which is fine. I mean, if we don't, you don't have to really, I guess we have to decide by Tuesday, don't we?
I mean, as a group, we decided we were moving that way at one point. So you know, let's three or two or whatever of us decide that we want to change that. I would assume we just continue that way.
Janie, do you have an opinion on it?
Bus, does that mean the ones that go out of town like to take sports teams?
Yes.
Yeah. I feel the seatbelts might make a difference in an accident, you know, for sure.
If I recall, when we had this conversation before, it was coaches who didn't necessarily like seatbelts because they have to monitor the players wearing them. They had, if they're on the bus, they have to wear them, which I don't think is a bad thing.
And Jess, did you have an opinion?
I just remember when we had the conversation too, there was talk up higher than just the district level that the state may be going to requiring seatbelts. So that was something we thought, let's get ahead of it and not have to retrofit it.
Right. And it's, I mean, it's not funded by the state right currently, but that's here nor there really.
But I, we did have quite a lengthy discussion on it before. And it makes sense on our, our buses that are sending kids out of town. They're, they're traveling to sports event. They're going to Seattle for the fun things that they, kids do over in Seattle. And, and I assumed, but we, we agreed not to put them at this point on regular route buses, but on buses that were used for trips. We would be retrofitting those or fitting those with seatbelts. And he needs to make the decision on by Tuesday. Do we have a decision tonight on the board where our recommendation is?
I would say do it.
Yeah.
That's where we were headed in the past. We might as well continue on.
Right. I think, I think.
And of all, of all the buses to put them on, and I realized there's not a kid in the world that likes to wear a seatbelt. I get it. They don't like to brush their teeth either. Who cares? But of all the ones, the ones that are going 65 down the freeway, the most likely end up upside down, I would think.
I think you have your answer then.
Thank you. That's all that I had.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the Superintendent's Report, Mr. Ellis.
So there are a few items that I wanted to cover with the board. And we, we've been getting questions about custodial coverage at the new high school. And the amount of square footage increased and the need for more custodians. So Craig and I are looking into that. We'll be reviewing it, Dave. Now, we're looking into using the, some S R funds, but we really want to look at the need and where the need is and how to fill that need best. Vaccines over the, the past week or so, I've vaccine and masking. I've had, had some concerns expressed to me about the state's mandate on that. And, and I feel like a lot of the concerns were mainly in principle about, you know, people are, they're forcing, or you know, it's a forced move. So WASD conferences, we have one in November coming up. That's the big WASD conference in Bellevue. And of course, we have an area directors WASD meeting September 30th in Grandview. I think last, last time we went, it was in Burbank and we made the trip up there. Bargaining, we're continuing to bargain with the PSC, the Principals Association and the Admin Assistance. Our tours have gone just excellent. And we're able to get a lot of community members in there as well as we had the board, I'd be able to lead some of the tours. And that was really, really positive. It was just a highlight to be able to show off that building and showcase it. And then I was able to sit in on a meeting with Construction Services Group and Architects West, really trying to revive the meetings in and around Witstrand and start to get some stakeholder voice. If, if you remember, we have the plans, but now it will go through kind of a fine tuning process of those plans. So that's all I have to report to the board. Any questions on any of that information?
Andy? Okay, thank you very much. We're going to move on to the board reports. And Janie, do you want to go first?
Oh, sure. Thank you. I just wrote mine out because I wanted to make sure I hit my points. My husband, Don, and I've been helping with the tours of the new high school. It's absolutely beautiful. It's been a fun experience and people seem pleased with the new building. I also joined a Zoom meeting week before last entitled Equity and Education Coalition. It was to address our school district's policy on use of force. I was looking forward to comments and questions from parents with children in our school district. However, it was held on a weekday from noon to 1:30. I consider that an impossible time because most parents work. I think there were four Prosser parents in attendance, two of whom that send their children to Patterson. Our policy on use of force is only intended to be used in a worst case scenario. In the event someone enters one of our schools with intent to do bodily harm to students or staff. The majority of the meeting quickly escalated into a forum on race and prejudice. I was offended by this because it's, because it is the goal of our school board and our superintendent to provide the best possible education and safety of all our children, regardless of race, sex, economic means, or special needs. I honestly felt like it was a planned attack on our community and school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Andy?
Well, I have one I wrote out as well. There's a saying that I heard a long time ago, and it goes nudge, push, shove, shoot. Throughout history, if a governing body wanted a group of people to move in a certain direction or do a certain thing, they would nudge the people under, in the direction they want. If the people did not act or react in the desired way, the governing body would then push a little harder to get the necessary results. That would take care of most of the people. And for the majority of the remaining people, they could quickly move to shove by making their lives difficult or possibly even dangerous. Most would fall in line. Finally, for the few that refuse to fall in line, come shoot and well, problem solved. Our governor recently reinstated a mask mandate and quickly followed it up with a vaccine mandate, saying that all school employees, healthcare workers, police, the MS, fire department, public employees will be vaccinated or else. So here's the deal, gang. We're all grownups. It's time to put on our big boy undies and act like grownups. There isn't a person in this room that doesn't know that there's a vaccine available and what the possible costs are if a person decides not to get it. If a person decides not to be vaccinated, that's their choice. If a person decides to gamble with their life by not wearing a mask, also their choice. We let people jump out of airplanes every day and that's dumb. I will not force somebody to inject an emergency use only vaccine into their body if they do not want to. I refuse to hold their job over their head or the threat of their livelihood if they do not fall in line. We should be ashamed of ourselves for ever letting these mandates get this far. Last year, we sold our kids down the road. We sold our rights down the road. We sold our way of life down the road for what? A 30% rise in teen suicide, some of the highest teen drug use in years. Being on our way to the highest overdose rates we've ever seen. At some point, we need to draw a line in the sand and decide if we are citizens or subjects. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Jess?
Okay. I was just going to share some community updates. So as Mr. Ellis said, we as board members were able to help guide some of the tours, lead some of the tours, and that was a really good experience. And I'm glad that people are getting a chance to see the new building and what, what all of our tax dollars created. And then there was the Thrive Monthly Meeting last Thursday that I attended. And then I actually volunteered at tonight's Housel Open House for the eighth graders, Manning the Thrive Table. And from that, it is time for everyone to take the community survey again. And then they're starting up their Guiding Good Choices Parenting Classes in October. So that is five Tuesdays in a row. And I have signed up to take that as well so that I can speak to what that's about and learn more about my own parenting. And then today I was able to attend the certificated luncheon that was held at the high school and. And then today I was able to attend the certificated luncheon that was held at the high school. And that was exciting to see all of the energy of the teachers and staff that are rapidly getting ready for Tuesday.
Thank you. Okay, that leaves me. And a couple of things. I, I did have the privilege of being on some of the tours for the high school. And we had a rather large group last Friday that Brian did an excellent job of, of taking us through the building. The comments were, oh, my gosh, we, I mean, most people had no idea how we were, their tax dollar was going to impact children for many, many, many years to, in the future. And they were all very happy with the decisions that had been made and where the building was going. So that felt really good. And on the, on Andy's, on the vaccine, the masks, the vaccines were a bit troubling for me because it was emergency use vaccines. They had not, at the time we received this, they had not been approved, a final approval. And Pfizer now has that final approval. I, I believe Pfizer does have the final approval now. I could be, yeah, I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure it was passed this week. The hard part is, and I know Matt is in, and the board all want to be very conscientious and be, be really taking different views to mind. I mean, we've all been struggling with this. However, my feeling right at this point with the letter that we received today from the governor is this is now formally the law. And as a member of the school board, I was appointed to ensure that we provided a fiscally sound, equitable and safe learning environment for all students and staff. To this end, my responsibilities then include that we are legally compliant with state and federal laws. We may have to find our way around some of them. But it, it, it puts a whole nother layer on this whole process that it is now formally mandated law. And so now I appreciate everybody's opinions on it. I've appreciated the phone calls and text messages that I've received and we are, will continue to move forward. Okay, moving on to students. Hannah, would you like to go first tonight?
Wait, wait. Like Mrs. Cole, I don't have anything heavy to share. I'm just planning to enjoy the dwindling days of summer vacation I have left before junior year rolls in. Make the most of it. Make the most of this year. In other news, I designed the band shirts for this year and I'm very excited about that. It's my first big graphic design project.
Where do we purchase one of those?
I'll get back to you.
And then you'll get back to the rest of this. All right, thank you. Zeke, would you like to comment tonight?
I don't really have anything exciting to share. Other than I'm excited for the school year. I'm excited for the school year, even though I'll be a part-time student at PHS and I'm doing CBC. It'll be nice to have a new school.
Great, thank you. All right, that's it for reports. So moving on to consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
I will second it.
Motion by Jess, seconded by Andy. Has there any questions by the board on the content agenda? Nope. Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 So all yes, thank you. Under action items, we have payroll and vouchers.
To approve payroll vouchers as presented.
Okay, I'll second.
Motion by Andy, seconded by Jeannie. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, so all yes. All right, resolution number zero four dash 21, 2021, 22 budget adoption. And this is a resolution, so we not only have to do the voice, a motion approval, but then we will do a little poll vote.
I move, we accept.
Seconded by Jess. Were there any questions? I do have a comment. Great, great job. You did a good job of keeping us informed as you were building the budget. So I appreciate that. Okay, so all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, aye, all yes. Now roll call, Jeannie?
Aye.
Andy?
Aye.
Jess?
I.
Peggy, yes. So all yes. All right, the next is resolution number zero five dash 21. And it's cancellation of municipal warrants. And for people that don't know what a warrant is, same as a check. Okay.
Move to approve resolution number zero five dash two one.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Andy, seconded by Jeannie. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All yes, roll call because it is a resolution, Jeannie?
Aye.
Andy?
Aye.
Jess?
Aye.
Peggy, yes. So. Future meetings, we have our next regular school board meeting on September 8th at, here in the library, and it'll start at seven o'clock. And our second meeting of the month is scheduled for September 22nd. And that is also here at Housel and will start at seven o'clock. If there's any need for changes, we will make those in time with that, fashion and get it posted. Okay, so that takes us to adjournment. I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion by Jess, seconded by Andy. All in favor of, of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, so all yes. All right, thank you, everybody for coming.